Okay. So then this item is our 7.6. Consideration of contract with Endpoint EMS Consulting LLC to assess the inter-facility transfer IFT and local emergency medical service agency LMSA services in the amount of $150,000 for the term of April 3, 2023 through December 25, 2023, and authorize the Chair to sign. And this is brought to us by Health Services.
Good morning, Board, and hello, community. Yeah, so we did a thorough second RFP process for our health services, IFT and LMSA organizational structuring. Over the past year and some changes since I've been here, it's clear to me that there's a need to get a general understanding of where we are, so where we can go. Bruno, you highlighted something important to me, and it's getting the reports, ensuring that we're not left behind, getting the data. So our inter-facility transfer system needs to be assessed. Endpoint has a record of EMS development, and they have a special niche in public health. Nancy, this wasn't done in isolation, this was done in collaboration from constituents within the county, I believe, seven people total, including myself, two of the most, what I consider arguably the most reputable physicians in Northern California, several directors, and several esteemed community members who are highly engaged. And we went through this process, and we followed the policy procedure, got all the Is, crossed all the Ts. So I bring to you today the candidate that was selected through the RFP process by the panel, Endpoint Consulting.
Okay. Supervisor Spatia.
I'm not exactly sure where this needs to go. At this moment in time, I'm definitely not looking to move forward and say yes. I don't know if this needs to restart the RFP process or just a no vote, but there's some very significant confusion in the RFP process. I know that, and I have all this in my emails, there was some concern from our local fire districts on the process. I know I spoke verbally and through email to Director Portney. It was told to me that there was no letter of intent that was submitted to any of the RFP proposals. And on 11/14, there was an email that arrived from Chief Ciancio requesting an official appeal. I again mentioned to the fire chiefs that at this moment, there is no appeal process because there's no letter of intent that was submitted. Also, an email from Director Portney stating the same right here. The public record available is the updated RFP. Soon, the letter of intent and proposals will be available to the stakeholders. That was 11/15. I then received a copy of the letter of intent that stated the $93,000-something dollar for the proposal. If you look at the proposal, that's what it's for, that same amount, but it also said that 11/14 was the final date at 5:00 PM to submit any appeals. On the letter of intent that we have in our packet, it says $150,000. There's a new Phase 4 that was not requested in the RFP or wasn't put in the proposal. I don't know if it was in all of the proposals or just at least the one that were being shown, that Phase 4 is not involved in that. But when you look at the letter of intent, it says that it's $150,000, and it says that it was November 8th that was the last day to submit an appeal. That just leads me to a great number of confusion and frustrations to misunderstand or not understand or being led to understand a certain thing when that's not what I'm seeing. So to me, this whole RFP process is messy. I've requested to look at all the other proposals. I believe there was five that was received, at least if I remember the memo correctly, that's what was stated. And I have not received thus far any of those proposals to be able to compare and contrast what was proposed compared to some of the other agencies that also submitted their proposals. So at this moment in time, again, I don't know if we restart the RFP process, which I have certain reasons to say that might not be the right track to take, or just say no today, but I'm definitely not able to move forward as I am utterly confused by the documentation and process that has occurred.
So I have a question on where the $150,000 came from when we've got $93,500 in this proposal?
Great, I'd love to answer a series of those questions. So when we do an RFP process and a candidate is selected, we submit a letter of intent to the individual who was selected. Unfortunately, it was leaked to people outside of who should have received that until we could have seen this RFP process through A to Z. And respectfully, people were asking for information that weren't privy to information because it wasn't public record yet. I'll digress. Once we submitted the letter of intent, we have to go through contract negotiations to make sure that the applicant is still interested, and they're able to complete the scope of work. And in the RFP, it does say that price could vary. So that's when we went into the contract negotiations with Anita and team to outline specifically the health department's needs, to be able to get a full scope assessment as a foundation to what we can build on with our community stakeholders' feedback input to ensure that we're providing adequate services to our constituents. So because of a leak of information that was not supposed to be provided to the public until the contract had been negotiated to present to the Board, we got into this mess. But the quality of the RFP process from A to Z on the health department side and the panelist side and the candidate side was above approach. So if we look at the record, which I clearly outlined and submitted, there is no pickups or barriers. Supervisor Bruno, you should have in your email right now, as well as Supervisor Pyska and the rest of the team, the candidates who submitted and the scoring and ranking sheets of all those who participated in the RFP process. And the reason why I'm bringing this to you today rather than several months ago is because there was an investigation that needed to take place to ensure that this process was followed, and to my knowledge, it has been. So I can't encourage you to move one way or another, but the sanctity of this process was followed. And again, this is a baseline for the health department to build on, to be able to engage our stakeholders and partners to meet the IFT need. So this is just the baseline on which we can build, so I would encourage it.
And the contract amount?
Rounded out to 150K total after contract negotiations, which were then signed by Anita and sent back to the contractor for consideration.
Where's that documentation? Because what we're seeing is the $93,500.
It should be in your, not to exceed 150, and it should be in the origin item. In the contract.
I don't understand how we go from $93,500 to not to exceed 150,000. If there's change orders, then we would approve them, or overages, we would approve them, but that's a pretty big amount to just round up.
Not to exceed, so if there are hiccups, natural disaster.
Yeah, all those things that you would bring back to us, I would think, for a change to the contract or an addendum.
Well, the contract is what it is. It hasn't been changed ever, signed by Anita, and then again, signed by the current attorney.
Okay, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Looking at the draft contract, I think where the disconnect might be is on page four, under Phase 4, I think 1.4 correctly describes the scope of work in the RFP. I think 1.5 pertaining to the MOOC and some review of that operations potentially is an add-on that is outside the scope of the original RFP, but I'm not going to go down into the weeds on that. Just in the interest of time, and we can loop in County Counselor or CAO Parker at some appropriate time, I think it's fair to say there were procedural irregularities in the letting of this RFP, not, you know, certainly not on purpose, you know, not blaming anybody, not pointing any fingers. To Supervisor Sabatia's question about whether we should just bring it back and take another bite at the apple or just let it go, I'm definitely of the opinion, taking another bite at the apple. But this RFP, I think, has had procedural irregularities, including at least one Public Records Act request that was not timely fulfilled, which made it difficult for people in the public to analyze what's going on. Yes, I belatedly got those other proposals today, but that doesn't really open up any public confidence that we've done our due diligence and that our RFP process has been done with full transparency. And I just want to do that to save time. You know, I know there's been talk of an appeal and stuff like that. I don't think we're reaching that today, and I don't think we need to dive into questions of standing or something like that. I just think, based on the available record, we failed in providing a fully transparent and compliant RFP process, and so can't support it moving forward today, but very interested in looking at the glass being half-full, looking at what the goal was of the RFP, taking a look at those hard issues, which are hard issues, IFT and LMSA. Allegedly, I'm involved in that because I'm on Emergency Medical Care Committee, but that's been kind of bumpy, and now there's other balls in the air about LMSAs and IFTs and stuff like that that I'm not privy to. So I can't really speak to the bigger issue of the wisdom of our current LMSA or the problems we're having with IFT. The subject matters of this RFP, I think, are very appropriate for further investigation and bringing back another bite at that apple, I think, is appropriate at some time in the near future. But this particular RFP had issues, and I think we'll hear some of them here today. But again, I don't want to belabor the point, I just think the point is that this one's not going to fly, in my estimation, and we'll see what the rest of the Board says. But that doesn't negate the need to continue to plum and try to get some forward progress on these issues.
Yeah, and I would just like to add, you know, context, you know, because of a breach in our data internally within the county, it did create quite an issue. Again, I must express that the validity in the process was followed. I can't control who shares documents outside of confidential documents outside of the department, but, you know, those individuals were held accountable for those actions. But the process of our RFP and this need for the health department was fluid. And so when documents are shared before they are made public record, before contract negotiations can be done, before other candidates are made aware, right? That creates a problem. So once the contract was signed, as it is now, as it has been, that's when a seven-day period opens up for everyone to review. The candidates review the contract, review the scoring sheets, and then give their opinion, not when an inside leak happens, someone hypothetically says someone is chosen, and then people start coming to me asking for records. I can't get that information, especially when they're confidential. That way, I protected the sanctity of this process to get us to where we are today.
Supervisor Spatia?
So I wholly disagree with that whole last part. It says by the date of the letter of intent, and the letter of intent said that the last date was the 14th. I have another one that says the 8th. So this process is not that process, that process was during the letter of intent.
But that's for...
Hold on, I'm still speaking. And I think that for any RFP, yes, there should be negotiated terms because you want to work with the consultants and maybe add or take away things depending on their strengths and weaknesses or anything new that may have came up, but to increase it by more than 50% at that point, my opinion is of the direction, start over and redo the RFP because maybe you would have found a different agency to be more fulfilling for the additional work that you're requesting to be done. The RFP process is to ensure equity, to ensure transparency, and when there's an increase of more than 50% negotiated with one specific agency rather than all of the above that would submit a proposal, I think that defies the purpose of the RFP. So again, today, I'm planning to just say no.
Yeah, so the rebuttal is for the candidate, it's not for a resident who shouldn't have information on this process. The rebuttal is...
And Director Portney, I get that, but the dates and the comments and even your comment now of when that appeal process appears seems to be all over the place, which, again, increases my confusion of this process versus solidifies what the process was.
I guess maybe we could backtrack. Have we, should I attach the RFP process for clarity? I mean, I can't express more how it wasn't, I mean, I have an outline here that I'm looking at, that it was bullet pointed, date, time, followed strategically. I can't help that documentation is leaked, and I can't share certain information with external candidates not involved in the process. So I followed it, but it seems like this process is being penalized because I followed the rules of the RFP process.
Okay, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, and again, I don't, this is not going to be a debate here. I understand the concerns about what an appellant might have, another bidder might have on this, and whatever leak happened that you're referencing may have complicated that. But there's another part of this proposal that after the bids are open, those responses basically do become public record unless the bidder has pre-marked some proprietary information that's not disclosable. There was a public records request, in fact, if it wasn't titled as such. People of the general public do have a right to be taken a look at those documents, even if they're not bidders, even if they don't have a direct financial interest. They may not have the ability to mount an appeal with any standing, but they have a right to look at it. And so whatever other hiccup in the process and whether it's defensible or not, that part of the process was clearly not followed. And that deficiency in and of itself is concerning enough that...
Yeah, they can't.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, they can't ask me for documents though.
We don't get to pick and choose which parts of this process we follow. And if one part of this process was not followed, as appears clear to me, and again, we can reach out to County Counsel at some appropriate time, then that we don't have much to talk about. We either followed the process to the letter or we did not. And by my estimation, we did not, and by at least one of the supervisors' estimation, we did not. And it doesn't really spend a lot of time going into which bullet points we didn't hit, we just didn't hit all of our targets on that.
They can't, people can't ask me for record once it's for the county, I have to go through a public records request. So I can't, I can't give a random resident internal information because it's confidential information. So if anyone wants to go to the county to do a public records request, by all means. But it's not, I can't give information. If someone were to write me an email and say, hey, I want information on X, Y, and Z, they need to go through the county process. Hence why I can't and will not share information outside of county's purview, just to give context of why information was not shared.
Okay.
If it was marked confidential.
I mean, we have, I heard a microphone click on over there.
Yes, thank you. So I'll start with Lake County Code, section, the purchasing ordinance, section 2-41 in particular, 2-41.1 sub I, where it says that a tabulation of all bids received, whether accepted or rejected, shall be opened for a public inspection during regular business hours for a period of not less than 30 calendar days after the bid opening. Sub J of that same section states that the assistant purchasing agent or purchasing agent shall submit a copy of the tabulation of all bids received to the Board of Supervisors together with their recommendation for award. Just in general, all records maintained by the county are public records. There are plenty, several exceptions to the disclosure of those records. That way, warrant exclusion or possible redactions. But that's all governed by the Public Records Act under the government code.
Thank you.
Does that mean like while the, while the director or agency is in the process, it could still be viewed, or does that just didn't?
It would be at least 30 calendar days after the bid opening. The tabulation of all bids received shall be open for public inspection. So there is a 30-day period, yeah, after the bids are open, under, just under the county's purchasing ordinance for formal and sealed bids.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. I know we have some people in the room.
Good afternoon. Mike Ciancio, it's Fire Chief with North Shore Fire. I have to say, I don't think this process was followed either. I'm the one that protested it from the beginning. There was a date set right after the intent to apply. It's hard to protest something specific when you don't have any records. So I believe that all the bids, once they made, the committee made their decision, the bids were public record, and I requested those public records, but the protest time, the appeal time was so short, seven days, that we, I couldn't get the records, number one, and number two, have enough time to review them. So I appealed it based on not being able to get the records to see what the scorers and the committee were looking at. I know at least one consultant that bid also requested public records, and they did not receive them either. They received score sheets, but they did not receive the proposals. It's hard to, it's hard to appeal a process when you can't see after their public record, when you cannot see what you're up against. So they did not make an argument for it because they didn't know what to argue. I don't believe this was very transparent all the way through. I agree and have questions. I think Chief Sepet is going to, more on the money side, but I believe that there is a difference between the cost of the consultant and what is actually being requested. So that's all I want to say for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Hi, good morning. Chief Sepet, Lake County Fire. The first RFP, I was on the panel, and then they aborted that entire process. We were guaranteed, as a Fire Chiefs Association, to be a part of the second RFP to go out. We are the sole providers of EMS in the county and have been consecutively for 19 years. We had no input on this whatsoever. So the $93,000, where's either $56,500 going? You know, and when I look at the MOOC operations, we have to reflect back to the Clayton Fire and the MEU. You know, during the Clayton Fire, we evacuated the hospital, we brought an Outta County ambulance strike team in. During the MEU, we brought three strike teams in to evacuate Lakeport, Kelseyville, two skilled nursing facilities with 90 patients, Sutter Lakeside Hospital, and the jail. Fast forward as a repopulating, they're going to evacuate the entire North Shore plus my district. I had 21 ambulances and the San Francisco MCI bus at my station that was coordinated by public health staff and the fire rescue organization of the county. Very well done, so I'm not sure why we're looking at somebody else to come in and run the MOOC operations when there is adequate staff that have been in the fight and done this. We decompressed during the COVID. We, you know, fire service stepped up during COVID. We did testings, we did vaccinations, all coordinated, so I'm not sure why we have to bring somebody else in as another consultant to show them their job. They've been boots on the ground. And I am a little bit frustrated that, because this does impact us and the communities we serve. And last year, we ran 14,277 calls, that equals 39.1 calls every 24 hours in the county. My department alone ran 5463, that's 14.9 calls my shift runs every 24 hours, and we need to be a part of this. And I don't feel that we were in any point in time ever, ever contacted and said, hey, we want your input. And the individuals on, I know two of the individuals, and they're like, not sure why we're on there, but this is kind of what we did, Betsy Khan and Justin Gaddy, both very good friends of mine. They're like, not sure why we're on there, but this is kind of what happened. So I just wanted to tell you that I think the MOOC, the public health staff that is there, they are very capable of doing their job, and they have done it for years. And the fire chiefs support what they have done. And I think as far as this RFP going out, the fire chiefs have hired AP Triton, and we're doing the kind of the exact same thing that you guys are doing. And I advised Supervisor Sabatia that we were, the delay, 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 so we hired our own consultant at about $70,000, a fire chief paid for out of her own pocket. That money could be better spent to pay North Coast EMS with a local EMS liaison. Morgan Fox has been doing an amazing job. I'm getting my people, their five call in, they submit at 8:00 in the morning by 10:00 that morning. I have an email from Wendy Chapman going, your personnel are good and ready to go. We recently had a meeting with the hospitals, amazing meeting, the best one I've been into in 35 years of addressing IFTs. I think it was the most positive, okay, I'm done. Most positive we had so far.
Okay. And feel free to come back after everyone's had their turn.
I'd say good morning, but it's good afternoon, supervisors, Madam Chair. Patrick Wright, Salt Lake Port Fire. Director Portney referenced leaks. It's not a leak when it's public information. I echo your comments, Supervisor Green. This process, I echo my fellow chiefs, this process was not above board. It is tainted, it is tainted from start to finish. This is the second process we've gone through that has been tainted, and that reflects extremely poorly on the director that's releasing the RFP. Follow the rules, they're very clear, and it's not amateur hour when you're at this level. It's important that we are doing things above board, that we are very public with how we are doing our business. The Brown Act drives that, the government code behind that drives that, and just our standing as... And just our standing as government entities in the state of California drive that. We can't have these hidden processes. You have subject matter experts that have not been consulted, that have not been brought into the process with the chiefs of each of the districts in this county. And quite frankly, I resent that, that we continue to be shut out, no open communications, and then not only that, denied public information from start to finish, hiding behind the term leak, stating that we bring in, and I've spoke with stakeholders who are unnamed. And quite frankly, I have to question, you know, their professional contact within the county and within the industry that's being called into question. In this case, the IFTs, inter-facility transports, ambulance, EMS, the Mohawk, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Other than two physicians, I have no idea who those folks were. I just would go to you, Supervisors, and set it for, on a go-forward basis, what the tone and what the tenor is going to be when we do RFPs, especially when it comes out of this department and out from this director. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. We have hands up?
We have Jen.
You can unmute, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon, Board. It's Jen Baker. I wrote out a succinct statement to keep myself on time. So some of it's been addressed. I apologize, but I'm just going to run through. Number one, although the attached memo states a panel voted on the several proposals, it provides no information on the panel. Can you please advise the panel makeup? And were there any members of fire, private, or air ambulance on this panel? Number two, reviewing the attached RFP and awardee proposal, the specifics needs listed in the RFP and services in proposal align section for section. However, the attached contract notes an additional service in Exhibit A, Section 1, subsection 1.5, for MOAC support, noting that endpoint through its subcontractor will provide these services A through E. MOAC consult is not referenced in the original RFP or awardee proposed services. Question two, can you please advise who this subcontractor that will perform this function will be? Number three, the only reference to cost of services in the agreement is in Section 3 stating not to exceed $150,000 max compensation. I refer to the awardee proposal for the cost located on Page 13 and See 93.5 is total, is listed inclusive of tentative need for Phase 4, all insurance, wages, overhead travel, and operating costs. Noting the scope of work beyond items identified in proposal will be mutually agreed upon and charged an hourly rate of $275. The proposal and max comp agreement vary by 56.5. Is this 56.5 the cost of the additional subcontracted MOAC service? Question four, if the answer is yes, question four A, what is the justification to pay more than twice the hourly rate you have been paying for identical service in the recent past? And question four B, can you please explain how this 56.5 subcontract service, not referenced in the original RFP or awardee proposal, adheres to the county purchasing policies, Section 2-39.1 subsection D, that specifically states for expenditures in excess of $50,000, written sealed bids are required and said bids shall be advertised? The MOAC contract support was initiated in early January 21 as a short-term agreement to provide rural reinforcement and extra support for new Health Department leadership staff, but now has three amendments to original agreement, one additional short-term agreement, and one emergency agreement spanning a year's worth of time. Assuming all agreements were fully billed, the MOAC consultant services to date have been invoiced for $105,000. Historically, these services were performed by the Department Head of Health Services in the P...
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have another hand up?
No, the hand went down.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, I just want to distinguish, this is complicated stuff. So the proposals are public record at a certain point in time. So immediately after the bid opening, when there's the appeal period running for other bidders, there is one set of rules that applies, and the proposals are not public record at that point. A little bit later, after the 30 days or whatever our code calls for, they do become public record. And I do think any request for information could be inferred as that and could have been complied with, or at least recommended to go file a Public Records Act request. It's complicated stuff. And just because you don't have standing as a potential appellant doesn't mean you don't want to have good information. So getting a better understanding out of today, hopefully, we can all, we can all start leaning on County Council a little bit more and say, okay, here we are at this point in the bid process, you know, what can I get? Here we are 30 days later after the contract's been awarded or is being negotiated. What can I get? I don't claim to have a full understanding of that. I hope nobody else does here. And it sounds like maybe we have one process for capital projects and another one when we're putting out proposals for professional services. So there may be some variations on that theme. So, you know, again, procedural irregularities happen. Letting public contracts can be complicated, and I think today proves that point amply. The immediate question is whether we're going to award this contract. I think I already said I'm not going to be in support of that. I do hope we can get some consensus today about whether we're just going to drop that hot potato or come back. I I have to gently disagree with the, any statements that we don't even need this contract. I want to be supportive of the original vision of our Health Services Director to put this contract out, to get the type of information he felt he needed to make valid decisions moving forward. I understand the Fire Chiefs' interest in being more fully involved. If we do let another RFP, and I think having their presence on a ranking panel would be appropriate looking ahead. But I don't see anything untoward in this. And whatever miscommunications have happened, have happened. And you can't unring the bell on that. But I'm interested in moving forward. So I can't move forward with this contract today. I'm glad that some people think we're all on the same page about IFTs and EMCC, but I'm not there yet. So I just want to signal my support for the idea that this RFP was put out in the first place. It's unfortunate it's back a second time. And if it's going to come back a third time, that will be unfortunate. But it's not the end of the world in my mind. So, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier.
I would suggest that we not move forward and not take another stab at it without a conversation with the Board on what exactly are we moving forward with? I want to make sure we don't duplicate. I want to make sure that we are approaching this in the right way. I want to make sure that we are doing the right thing for our communities. And so I would like to have another conversation regarding this, as to how this would come back, if it comes back.
Okay, is there action?
As far as I'm concerned, no action.
Yeah, that's where I'm at too, at this point. And obviously, for the concerns with our public health department, the Fire, you know, our Fire Chiefs, yeah, I completely agree with them being on the panel if this does come back and continuing those conversations at this point. So very complicated issue. Been on the Board for six years. I don't think there's been any easy solutions or conversations around these items. But, you know, as we're moving forward, we need to collaborate and communicate with each other. So I completely agree with that, Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Green.
So consensus to bring this back for a Board discussion before we move forward on another RFP?
So a Board discussion before anything else moves forward? Is that what we're saying?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, because I feel too that the Chiefs, I've spoken, I've spoken with some of them, and they've done a lot of this work. They're working well with North Coast EMS and things of that nature. And so I think if we move forward, some of the data, some of the information that they've conducted, it could be implemented and basically lower the cost, if you think of anything like that. You know, it might help. But, but yeah, no, I'm in favor of coming back.
Okay. All right, then we will close this item and we can finish our open session off with calendars.